And so on this electronic platform, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. We ordinarily start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. And at this time, I would ask that Supervisor Donnahey lead us in the pledge, and then I will lead us in the moment of silence. Thank you Supervisor Donnahey.
Thank you Chair Smith. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know this is a bit of a departure from our normal moment of silence, but I wanted to acknowledge what is happening in the world today. So I would like to dedicate this moment of silence to our first responders, fire and rescue, our sheriff's office, the Virginia State Police, the National Park Service, and all law enforcement. I would like to dedicate it for the health and safety of all people, especially the people of Rappahannock County, and for the comfort and care of those who are ill or grieving. I would like to ask for strength and wisdom for all of our officials, essential personnel, doctors, nurses, and all on the front line. And may we give thanks for the nonprofits, churches, businesses, big and small, social services, and all volunteers working nonstop during this difficult time. If you would please observe a moment of silence. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that because we are on this different platform this morning, electronic meeting, I just wanted to have an opportunity to say that the way that we're going to handle things today is that we will be mindful to slow things down, to be clear about what is going on. I will try to identify all the board members as we move through these agenda items. If I should drop the ball, I would ask that everyone please help me out and identify themselves when they speak. Mr. Curry, is there anything additional I need to add at the beginning or to launch this new format today?
I will just suggest on the screen that I'm broadcasting is the code section through which localities are enabled to hold fully electronic meetings when the matters discussed are related to the emergency and the first items on the agenda are squarely related to the emergency. And dependent on those actions, further action may be taken on non-matters not related to the emergency.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. As we navigate through this new technology, I'm sure we'll be successful. There may be a few bumps in the road today, but I'm sure we'll have a great result and an even cleaner run next time. That takes us to the first agenda item, B1, the Board Confirmation of Local Declaration of State of Emergency. Mr. Curry, if you would please cue us up on this.
Yes, as board members will recall, earlier this month on the 17th, I declared a local state of emergency pursuant to the authorities granted by the Code of Virginia in Section 44, 146, 21. That same section requires the local declaration to be ratified and confirmed by the Board of Supervisors within 45 days or at your next regular meeting or within 45 days. This meeting seeming to be appropriate time to do that, resolution has been prepared and included in the packet in Board Docs through which the Board can make that confirmation. The language largely tracks what was included in my declaration, but specifically includes the word disaster, which tracks to language in 15.2, 1413, which is the section that enables you to adopt an ordinance for continuity of government. So if you need any further explanation, please let me know.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Curry. As we move through the agenda today, I will just ask each Supervisor for input on the agenda items as we move through them to make sure everyone has an opportunity to comment. Mr. Frazier, do you have anything to add for this agenda item?
No, I think what I would like to mention about the science to be covered under, I think it's, what is it, B3?
Okay.
That's all I have.
So you're fine with B2 now?
I think so, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Donnahey?
I'm good at this time with everything that's been presented.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whitson?
No further comments from me. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, I have nothing to add.
All right, and I would just add that I thank the county administrator for working through this document and, you know, to follow up to sort of the vote of confidence we gave him in anticipation of drafting this document. And I think it meets all of the criteria you would expect to accomplish this and I would entertain motion to adopt this.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so we'll be taking all of our votes today in a roll call format.
And Chairman Smith, if you could vocalize who moved and seconded for those who may not recognize voices.
I believe that was, I can't remember.
Well, I can. It was Mr. Frazier moved and Ms. Donnahey seconded.
Ms. Donnahey seconded. So we have motion of the second. So at this point, we will make our way down our normal table. Mr. Frazier from Jackson District?
Aye.
Ms. Donnahey from Wakefield District?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson from Hampton District?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish from Stonewall Hawthorne District?
Aye.
And I also. So the resolution passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is Board Consideration of the Emergency Ordinance. Mr. Curry, if you could be so kind as to walk us through the attachments on this agenda item, and then we'll have our work discussion.
Yes ma'am. So this item, as I noted just earlier, the Attorney General issued an opinion earlier this month that urges, leverages enabling authority in Code of Virginia 15.2, 1413 for counties to adopt an ordinances to effect the continuity of government. Further, localities are enabled to adopt emergency ordinances when there's not appropriate time to advertise and solicit public hearing comment on ordinances, which is normally required in advance of adopting ordinance. However, the ordinance can only be effective for 60 days. And that is the second section referenced, 15 to 1427F. So with those two items in mind, I'm going to mute one line. With those two items in mind, ordinance was drafted by myself and Mr. Goff that borrowed heavily from other localities to provide a continuity path forward. That document is attached to Board Docs in the item that I was selecting called "Date, Year, 20, Month, 04, Date, 02, Meeting, Emergency Ordinance COVID-19." Just recently, a revised version was updated with some altered language. And then in addition to that, there's an added paragraph that may be considered by the Board to insert. So I will open the revised version, and we can walk through this. The preamble sets up the authorities granted by the governor, the review conducted, the executive orders issued by the governor, the review made by the Attorney General, and then ultimately, the declaration of emergency, a local emergency that was placed by me and ratified or confirmed by the Board today. And then moves into what is actually being ordained, which is in multiple sections. And the idea with this ordinance is that it prepares the community to move forward during uncertain circumstances, including providing authority for the Board to meet during times when a physical quorum is not available, such as today, but only on items rather than directly related to the emergency related to essential government. And I don't want to read all of this because it's been available on Board Docs. So the details on how public meetings would be held pursuant to this ordinance is included in Section 2 in great detail. It does not waive FOIA requirements, still requires three working days notice and the same type of posting that we typically do. It does provide for citizen comment through alternative methods. And for example, this meeting in Board Docs, public comment is included on the agenda with the public suggested to email the county administrator's office, call the county administrator's office before a date and time certain, and possibly will be able to provide comment through the interactive platform of Zoom, although not guaranteed based on the technological limitations. Beyond the providing for meetings electronically for essential business, and let me go back just to say that this ordinance defines essential business in this section and here on my cursor. So hopefully you can see, essential business is defined as those items without the passage of which the public interest would be irrevocably harmed. And we keep that in mind going forward as meetings are held electronically to protect the Board from potential cross-contamination or infection. We're only moving forward on those items that are essential through this mechanism. Section 3 provides for suspension of deadlines, timeframes, and procedures as they may come up, including appointments. So it contemplates that as appointments expire during this period, they will automatically be extended until the time that the emergency ordinance is no longer effective, plus 60 days to provide the Board time to handle those items. Those appointments are not deemed to be essential, therefore they're put off. Section 4 deals with public buildings, facilities, real property, and events. And while the Code of Virginia would suggest that the Director of Emergency Management is empowered to take certain actions, this ordinance makes it clear that with respect to county property, to ensure health, safety, and welfare of the public, the Director is enabled to cancel, postpone, reschedule any events scheduled on county-owned building, facility, property, et cetera. Section 5 deals with purchasing, supplemental appropriation, and approval of accounts payable. The preamble sets out that the following modifications to standard protocol will apply only in the instance when the Board of Supervisors is unable to meet with a quorum, either physically or electronically. And it also sets out succession path for the tasks within this section should the Chair or Vice Chair, who are specifically listed below, are unable to meet. For example, if they find themselves in the hospital fending off COVID-19. So with respect to purchasing, there are two sections. One would increase the authority of the purchasing agent, again, only in those times when the Board cannot meet and fulfill their normal operating pattern, to increase my award authority from 10,000 to 50,000. And then it sets up that on my recommendation, the Board Chair and Vice Chair, as could be replaced through succession, have the authority to award contracts in excess of $50,000. So if such a time comes that we only have two members available and the others are incapacitated, we can still perform necessary business and perhaps critical business related to the emergency. Second, the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, upon recommendation of the county administrator, is authorized to approve supplemental appropriations in these same circumstances when they're valued less than $25,000, when there's 100% offsetting revenue, which happens from time to time for insurance recoveries, or perhaps when a grant comes through from the state or federal government, and if time is of the essence, as determined by the county administrator, Board Chair, and Board Vice Chair, again with the understanding of succession path. Lastly, to the extent the funds have been duly appropriated, the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, upon recommendation from the county administrator, is authorized to approve the monthly list of accounts payable, therefore authorizing timely payments. So in the event that the Board cannot manage a quorum to take this function that is typically done by vote of the Board, there is an avenue to go forward to pay our bills in those circumstances. It's important to plan ahead for those because if you get to a point where you can't manage a quorum, you're no longer able to pass an emergency ordinance. And so we need to get ahead of that. There is a short paragraph here encouraging the town to take similar actions, to be prepared for themselves. And before we jump to discussion, allow me to bring up the additional paragraph that was suggested by some board members as a concept. Mr. Goff worked up the details after discussing with other county internals in the state. This further paragraph would be inserted immediately after the last paragraph encouraging the town that would seek to close our short-term rental establishments. And I'll go ahead and read it in case it's not clear enough on the screen. I might blow it up a little bit. That effective this evening, 11:59 PM, and continue until such a time as the state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Virginia is lifted or until such other further notice, the advertising of land rental of a hotel room, motel room, rooms in a B&amp;B, tourist home, rental housing unit, condominium, RV campsite, primitive campsite, rental cabin, or similar accommodation for less than 30 consecutive days is hereby prohibited except to those contractors, medical personnel, and employees performing essential services within the Commonwealth. Persons displaced from their homes in Rappahannock County due to fire or for other such reasons, rendering such home unsafe to inhabit, are not prohibited from renting short-term rentals in the county. Current guests in a hotel, motel, vacation rental, or other short-term rental housing unit may remain in their occupied quarters for the duration of their existing rental agreement, but may not extend such agreement to beyond that date the term originally expires. So with all of that said, hopefully you have enough background to properly discuss the emergency ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, for walking us through those attachments. I just, this is Chair Smith, and I did want to just discuss. I had talked to Mr. Curry this morning after seeing his revised emergency ordinance. I do think it is important that if essential business is before us, that we conduct it as a Board for as long as we can. I also would ask that there be some language added at the end of the ordinance where it sort of dictates the chain of command between the Chair and the Vice Chair, that as those roles may shift, that they shift in order of seniority so there's just clarity as to who the next individual on line would be. So those are my thoughts on these couple of attachments. And I would ask that Mr. Parrish from Stonewall Hawthorne District, for your comment, please.
Well, it seemed like a good idea to be prepared. What did you mean by the next on the line? In other words, this is from Mr. Curry to the Chair, and then to the Vice Chair, is that what you said?
That's correct. So it would be clear that it would be, you know, as responsibilities may shift in order of succession, that should the Vice Chair or I be unable to, that it would shift to the most senior Board member, which would be Mr. Frazier, and then yourself, and then Mr. Whitson.
All right, okay.
So that was my thinking there, simply in terms of, you know, anything practical that may come up. I think that's the best way to handle it.
Yeah, it sounds okay.
And I would entrust that revision to Gary.
Well, I would like to sort through it today. And Mr. Goff is scribbling some changes on his copy that may change as additional members provide their input.
Very good. And then I would ask Mr. Whitson from Hampton District for any input.
Thank you Chair Smith. I just had a couple of comments. On Section 5, I also had a conversation with Mr. Curry about the language. And I think the proposed revision is something that I'm very comfortable with in that it, as you already stated, would put us in a position where, to the extent possible, the Board as a quorum or members of the Board in conjunction with Mr. Curry would be involved in any significant emergency-based purchasing decisions. So I think that that protects the public interest most importantly. The other comment I would have would be on the additional section that Mr. Curry just shared with the public regarding tourist homes and B&amp;Bs and Inns. And I just had a couple of comments first, and we'll start this in the next section of the agenda. I want us all to be mindful that we might get into a situation where we are going to need rental housing for our own first responders to allow them to isolate themselves from their families and to allow them to continue making calls should this emergency escalate. So I want to be mindful of our need to, our need for secure possible rental accommodations for our own first responders under a worst-case scenario. And I believe that Mr. Goff's draft might already, with certain of the exceptions listed, address that. The second thing I've heard from a number of constituents and other members of the Rappahannock County community that many extended family members are coming home to the county to be home with their own families who are residents here in the county. And to the extent that residents in the county might have themselves face limitations to accommodate their extended families who are now coming home, making sure that we have especially tourist homes available for those extended family members who come back to Rappahannock County I think is an important idea to keep in mind. So if we do add this language, which I believe stems from similar actions taken in H-town, I want to ensure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot, so to speak, and placing limitations on ourselves that might preclude us from taking sensible action should we need it with respect to first responders, and then also accommodating extended family members of our own residents. And then finally, I would say that we need to think about from an enforcement perspective, do we want to create a situation where our deputies might be asked to conduct additional enforcement duties vis-à-vis tourists who are possibly allowed to stay in Inns, which I think under the current situation with all of our national park access seeming to be closed, are we even going to have visitors? And is this an overdone effort? So those are just my comments on that section. Nothing further on the proposed ordinance as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donnahey?
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. I had one question, given that the broadband committee is about to try to decide if they're going to meet or not via Zoom or phone. The section, I think it's 2E, nothing in this ordinance shall prohibit public bodies. Mr. Curry, do you have a recommendation as to meetings such as this, whether they should go forward or not?
So generally, the Code of Virginia does not afford public bodies to meet electronically. A, unless they're talking about an emergency, well, period. There is this avenue for essential business to be conducted if there's a local ordinance adopted. So the action taken by us as a Board to adopt this ordinance would afford the committee to meet, but that meeting should be regarding essential business. And obviously broadband is very critical as we're learning during this environment. But I would think for it to rise to an essential level, it would have to be such that it's time-sensitive that if you didn't meet, then we would, the community would lose out. For example, if there was a significant grant or loan process that the Board found acceptable and expired before the emergency was over, and I know that REC has re-energized their interests in this area, then it probably would be perfectly acceptable for the broadband committee to meet about that time-sensitive matter. And Mr. Goff is shaking his head. Yes.
Thank you for that. Then going into the final paragraph that was added, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Whitson has said. I think the businesses of Rappahannock County as a whole are doing everything they can to protect the citizens of Rappahannock County. The park closure should, and we'll know this weekend, take care of people coming into the area as much as possible anyway. And the B&amp;Bs and tourist homes, as far as the ones that Teresa Woods or businesses of Rappahannock has spoken with, they don't have reservations. They don't have people trying to come in here with the governor's order. They are staying out of the area or if they're coming in somewhat illegally to use the park, then they're not staying the night they're leaving. So the businesses of Rappahannock, just because I'm a business owner, have been going through tremendous issues, as you can imagine, and making this an official motion for the Board to tell them they can't be in open for their neighbors or friends or whomever might need them, or our first responders, I think goes a little bit farther than I would like to go.
Thank you. And Mr. Frazier from Jackson District?
Well, I can see where the heavy hand of government is distasteful to many people, especially me. But at a time like this, many people have contacted me and stopped me, you know, went a little bit out in the public that I am doing. And they don't want people coming out here staying. So the way it's written now, I don't think it precludes any of these B&amp;B or tourist home people from, you know, letting the EMS people or whatever, the first responders, from using these properties. I think it prohibits us from advertising and taking out-of-town people. I'm supportive of it. Maybe we can change a word here or there so that residents can use them. Maybe that one sentence can be expanded somewhat. But I think it's a very important tool that we have, the way how to use it.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Does anybody else have anything to say on this, either of these agenda items? To move through this gracefully on the electronic?
I have a.
Oh, yes, Mr. Parrish?
Yeah. I'm wondering, in the event that there are people that want to come to Rappahannock County from elsewhere to shelter in place for an extended period of time, say, one or two months, one or two or three months, would rental property be available to them in that respect?
It's my understanding from the way this is written, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Curry, and this is Christine Smith, the way this is written-
The way this is written, this is geared towards short-term rentals, and rentals more than 30 days.
So where is the short?
Wow.
At what point is it not short-term? Is it one? Is it 30 days?
My understanding is 30 days, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Curry.
It's 30 days.
Yes, 30 days, and that's Code of Virginia-driven relative to our taxing authority on the short-term rentals, and that's also ultimately what will likely end up in our zoning ordinance.
So my question is, if a B&B or a guest house wanted a tourist home, they could still, even with this ordinance adopted, they can still rent for a 30-day period to outside people that wanted to shelter in place?
Yes. And Mr. Goff is saying yes.
Okay.
As long as it's longer than 30 days.
Is there any further discussion on either of these agenda attachments?
And Mr...
There you go.
Go ahead.
I was saying, Mr. Whitson may have something to add.
Oh, very good. Please go ahead, Mr. Whitson.
Thank you. I'm going back to the ordinance as a whole. In passing, Mr. Curry mentioned appointments or board appointments, and I wanted clarification on that. My understanding is that the Social Services Board has a vacancy. And my question is, given all that's going on and the critical role of social services in helping and protecting our community, to what extent, and I don't mean to split hairs and cause Mr. Goff grief here, but my question is, to what extent could certain board appointments, such as one to the Social Services Board, be deemed essential business in the context of the overall COVID-19 situation?
Is that a question?
So that's a question directed toward our county attorney, Mr. Goff.
It is, and for further discussion of the board, if anyone else wants to comment on that. It's a key question for me.
Mr. Whitson, I...
Mr. Goff, are you able to comment on that?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me? Hello?
I can hear you.
Okay. I think Mr. Whitson raises a good point in that social services is, I believe, an essential service of government. So I think we could perhaps craft this to take that into account.
The intention in drafting the language was to automatically extend those appointments that are set to expire until such a time they can be handled.
But I thought the question was premised on fact.
This is Kier Whitson again. I guess I should rephrase my question. It comes down to a vacancy on a board, a board that is likely critical to providing social services in our community. And so with a vacancy now on the Social Services Board, I just want to make sure that we would not be precluded from proceeding with an appointment of a community member to that seat while we're in this emergency period and relegated to electronic meetings.
This is Gary. I'm not sure if there's a vacancy at this moment. I'd have to pull that up.
The language, as I understand it, in terms of appointments, is fairly limited. This is Chairman Smith. It says, "Further appointments to committees, commissions, and boards made by the board supervisors that have terms set to expire during the declared state of local emergency are automatically extended for the period of time this emergency ordinance is effective, plus 60 days." So it has to do more with folks cycling off of their appointments, and to my mind, it doesn't preclude us from making appointments. Mr. Goff, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Let me get to that act language.
Section 3, the end of Section 3.
Yeah, the way it reads, it... It applies to appointments to committees and boards that have terms set to expire during the declared state are automatically extended. So if you're talking about filling a vacancy right now...
Well, let me... Ms. Metcalf's term on the Social Services Board expired on April 1st, 2020, yesterday. That expiration date did occur during the declared state of local emergency. So it would be by Section 3 automatically extended. That's correct. If it expired prior to the local declaration, it would not be, as worded. And of course, the board could word that section differently.
Yeah, this is Kier Whitson again. I think that's exactly what I was anticipating, and I didn't have a handle on the precise time, and I had understood that that vacancy was coming over because I've heard from interested community members. So to that end, it is effectively a vacancy that, with this language, would be extended. And if Ms. Metcalf would be willing to remain in that position, then that solves the issue. If she would not be willing to remain in that position, then I think we need to amend this language to make sure that we fill that vacancy that has now been created, absent understanding from her if she would like to remain.
So this is Chairman Smith, and I would just say, I think we can resolve this by adding a sentence to the effect, if the appointee for whatever reason can no longer serve, the board can make the appointment during their scheduled meetings. And I mean, I'm receptive to wordsmithing on that, Mr. Curry or Mr. Goff. But I think certainly if someone is unable, for whatever reason, to serve, that we need to be able to make that appointment.
And is this...
Ron Frazier here, maybe just a suggestion, you know, the federal government, the president, in case the Senate is in recess, he has the authority to make temporary appointments. Maybe we could just make a temporary appointment until such time as this is listed.
Now, this is Kier Whitson. That's a good suggestion.
Okay.
I'm both hands. Yeah, Ms. Smith and Mr. Frazier, I think both have made good points.
Mr. Goff would have something to add?
I was trying to clarify, Ms. Smith, Chairman Smith, whether or not your amended language, whether your amended language was pertaining only to essential services appointments or just generally.
I would think we'd want to make it to essential services appointments.
Okay, and that's what I understood to hear from Mr. Whitson as well. Am I correct in that?
That's correct. Yeah, it's... I'm asking for fine-tuning of language to ensure that we're not precluded from filling vacancies and making appointments to bodies that are critical at a time like this. And I deem social services to fall precisely into that category.
I'm working on a draft amended sentence.
I know we're under the gun here, and I apologize to the public for dragging this out, but I need to work through this ordinance and adopt it so we can move forward.
But I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Parrish?
If we recognize that this is a potential problem, and if we hadn't left it alone like it is, and passed it like it is, and in the event that a situation arose that would require us to change it or adopt something different, then we could do it at that point, if necessary.
So this is Gary, and many of your appointments and terms are set out by our local ordinance. And I believe it would be most appropriate to extend those or modify the process also by ordinance. And generally, preparing an ordinance takes more time unless you go the emergency route and then ratify it later after public hearings. So it would be preferable to work out the best available language now, if you can.
What I've written here as an interlineation at the end of subsection 3 is the following language. "If an appointee is unwilling or unable to continue to serve, and such vacancy is to a body critical to essential services, the board may act to fill such vacancy."
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Repeat just one more time, please.
Repeat it? Yes, ma'am. "If an appointee is unwilling or unable to continue to serve, and such vacancy is to a body critical to essential services, the board may act to fill such vacancy."
Thank you, Mr. Goff.
This is Kier Whitson.
I think Mr. Parrish, I think, is asking to be recognized.
No, I'm not, but that does, I think what Mr. Goff said works, so I'm fine.
Very good. Mr. Whitson?
Yes, I compliment Mr. Goff, though. It was quick work, and it's perfect, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
Hold on, let me see. She's muted. I mean, unmuted. There you go.
Thank you.
I think the addition that Mr. Goff has made is very good for the situation on board.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm fine with that language.
Very good. I was wondering, if Mr. Goff had also been able to work through the language in regards to seniority for the last portion of the ordinance as well?
Yes, Chairman Smith, I've made the following interlineation to the last sentence of the first paragraph of Section 5. And it reads, "If both the chair and vice chair become incapacitated, any board member," and then carrot, "in order of their seniority, or two board members are authorized to act in the place of the chair or the vice chair as follows, and the rest is not pertinent."
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Mr. Frazier, did you have any comment on that?
No, that sounds like we can keep the work going.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue, did you have anything to add?
No, I think that makes great sense.
Very good. Mr. Whitson?
Hold on. He's been unmuted.
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, thank you for unmuting, Mr. Curry. It's perfect, and it accomplishes what I had a concern about, so thank you, and apologies for the distraction.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, it makes sense. The way I understand it goes from Mr. Curry to the chair to the vice chair to a member of seniority, which would be Mr. Frazier after the vice chair. Then, in the absence of that, if two members, if that didn't work, then in the absence of that, two members could accomplish what needed to be done. Is that correct?
Not exactly.
I didn't understand the two members.
So subsection A, B, and C of Section 5 in some situations require the chair's action in addition to the county administrator, and in some situations require the chair and vice chair in addition to the county administrator. So in those circumstances, where only the chair is required to take action, in the absence of the chair, the vice chair would be empowered to take action. But in the absence of the chair and vice chair, the most senior board member would be empowered. In the absence of the chair, vice chair, most senior, then it would be you, Mr. Parrish. And then, I'm not sure exactly how we would manage who to pick between Mr. Whitson and Ms. Donahue, given they have the same exact seniority, but we'll sort that out at the time.
She's the vice chair, so she's the vice...
And she's the vice chair, so that is sorted out. You're right. And so, but some sections require both to be, both the chair and vice chair because it's authorizing purchases of any dollar amount. And so in a situation when the board cannot meet, and a large purchase needs to be made, and the chair and the vice chair are not available, then it would be the two most senior board members remaining.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. And I would just add, I think that these additions, I think they're simple and elegant, and thank you, Mr. Goff, for crafting them on the fly this morning.
Yes, ma'am. I was the question.
To accomplish addressing the few concerns that we have regarding this ordinance, and, excuse me, that I find them to be very agreeable. And I would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance as revised to include the changes recommended by Mr. Goff this morning. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, before doing that, we have not yet addressed the amended language for the insert section regarding the short-term rentals, and I had that prepared for the board to consider as well, if you'd like me to read that.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. If you would do that, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am. If you turn your attention to where, in the middle of a paragraph where it says, "30 consecutive days," then, comma, "except to those contractors," then insert "first responders" before the phrase "medical personnel." That'd be my first suggested amendment. Then to add a sentence at the end saying, "Nothing herein shall prohibit residents of Rappahannock County from renting rooms to accommodate extended family member visits."
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Mr. Frazier, did you have any comments on this addition or changes?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue, did you have anything in regards to these recommended changes?
And I think the addition of the family members being able to stay covers a lot of the concerns of the citizens I speak with, so I'm good with that.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson, did you have anything to add?
No, I think that's okay. I think we're striking the right balance there. As I said before, I just don't want us to put ourselves in a position of precluding our ability from accommodating people who live here and work here and are helping us in a time of need from temporary housing. So if everyone else is comfortable with it, I am too, and I appreciate Mr. Goff's seat on the fly work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Mr. Parrish, did you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Thank you, Chris. All right, and I would just again say thank you, Mr. Goff, for having those additions to refine it, to build unanimity of board. I really appreciate your taking into account those additional details so we could take into account these additional concerns as we move forward this morning. So now, I guess I would entertain a motion in regards to the revised emergency ordinance language that we reviewed. Do I have a motion?
Let's move, Ron Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. And do I have a second?
Kier Whitson, I will put forward a second of that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier, please signify by voting aye. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Good. In regards to the other attachment to this agenda item, the added paragraph for short-term rental limitations, do I have a motion to approve this? for short-term rental limitations, do I have a motion to approve this? To include...
Chair Smith, I took the last vote to add that already in.
Oh, you did? Okay, very good.
But you should clarify with other board members.
I did want to just mention then that in order of our succession here, if that is agreeable and clear to everyone, or do they need any additional time to comment on the lodging portion of this ordinance? Mr. Parrish, are you, are you, should we move on?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Hold on. Okay. Yeah, my vote on the ordinance assumed we would be including that section, so we're good to go, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
Yes, I assume the same.
Very good. And Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, we're good also.
Very good. Thank you all. I know it's a little bit of a graceless exercise at times working through this, but I appreciate everyone's pulling together for unanimity and to craft documents that we all find agreeable. And thank you to Mr. Curry and Mr. Goff as well. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is B3, the discussion and consideration of community isolation options. I would actually like to expand this a bit, and we can, we can do that when we adopt the agenda here shortly, to encompass a bit more of an emergency preparedness discussion, if folks find that agreeable. But I did ask that Mr. Curry add this to the agenda in light of some of the background discussions about lodging in the counties that might be available particularly for our first responders as this COVID-19 situation unfolds. Mr. Curry, do you have any details you can give us in regards to information that you have heard?
Well, first, let me say that now that the ordinance is adopted, you could adopt the agenda in its entirety at any time. You could do that now if you wanted to and expand this discussion however you, the board saw fit. But generally with regard to the emergency, we continue to focus on what we are hearing from the Virginia Department of Health and the governor's office. And the most important thing that I would like to share with the community and will continue to do so is that while the map prepared by VDH shows a white hole and a sea of blue in Northern Virginia, the data that is presented there is aged at least by six or seven days from the day when the individual who ultimately tested positive first started feeling symptoms, and perhaps much longer than that during the time that individual may have been contagious. And so we cannot have a sense of security that there are no reported cases in Rappahannock County. What that map is showing is an indication of what the situation was for those that were tested seven or so days ago. And that's very important for our people to understand. The social distancing is key and is one of the main reasons why Mr. Williams and I and others believe it's important for the board to meet separately because they all may be, you all may be feeling very healthy today, but it would be very easy for you if you all came in contact with each other to have five board members sick at one time. And we're hopeful that through distancing, we can spread out the sickness that is very likely to come to our community over a period of time so we have not all of our board members sick at one time, not all of our staff sick at one time. And that is our goal. It's coming, we just want to manage the best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. In light of that and wanting to broaden this discussion, I guess I would act that we move to the adoption of the agenda, which is slated to be item C1, but make that the current agenda item B3, and then move this discussion to item B4 and have that be an emergency preparedness discussion. And for the sake of simplicity, I will go ahead and put that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
You have a second. So you have to go to the...
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. So we'll move through the succession for this vote to amend the agenda, to adopt the agenda, but make the adoption of the agenda item B3 and then move the discussion to item B4 and have it be an expanded emergency preparedness discussion. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Thank you, and I also. So that takes us to, back to the item that we were discussing, the emergency preparedness discussion. And I know, I think Mr. Whitson has a few updates for this agenda item, so if I could, I would, I would let you kick off this discussion, please, Mr. Whitson.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The first, the first, I don't have a point to mention that has not been discussed very publicly yet. This will put some light on what else. Mr. Curry, Ms. Smith, and others had asked me a week or so ago to try to put together a small database of standalone guest houses or vacation rentals that could be used on an emergency basis to house and isolate first responders should we end up in a worst-case scenario. And the concept there, and Mr. Curry can add details if I'm missing anything, but the general concept is that if our first responders do begin to run frequent calls with potential exposure to COVID-19, we would want to give them a way to isolate themselves from their own families to protect them from infecting their families. And while that all sounds very dire, I think it's a very sensible contingency plan. So to that end, with the help of many generous citizens, we've so far put together approximately 10 standalone guest houses or tourist home type dwellings. And I would just use this opportunity to say to the public who are either watching the livestream or listening to the audio of this meeting, if this is something where you could assist us, if you have a guest house or know someone who does, we'd be willing to offer it, again, as a contingency plan to add to this list of properties. Again, right now we have about 10 on the list, but I would invite you to contact me directly. My contact information is all available on the Rappahannock County website. So that's the first update. Mr. Curry, am I describing correctly the concept there from an emergency services standpoint?
Yes, generally, as our first responders come in contact with someone who may be infected, they will, they will learn from the hospital and VDH that that contact occurred, and at which point in time they may be in a position where they have to isolate and quarantine. And this would provide a location to do that without them infecting their family.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Smith, if I could just ask to continue on the second item. The second item, which has been widely discussed this week, and we did have a meeting on Monday night, and so this was discussed to some degree, but I wanted to give an update with breaking news from this morning. So this relates to our effort to reduce significantly the number of visitors to Rappahannock County vis a vis the popularity of Shenandoah National Park. And again, as I stated on Monday, once Old Rag and White Oak Canyon were closed by the National Park Service, we all citizens and those of us on the board alike noticed a significant uptick in traffic in Rappahannock County from hikers and visitors generally. With the approval of my fellow board members, I began working with the National Park Service late last week, and also with Sheriff Compton, and also with VDOT to find a way, as long as the Shenandoah National Park remains open, which it is still open as of today, what can we do, what could we do as the Rappahannock County community to at least close off access to Shenandoah National Park from the lower park boundary, which extends throughout parts of Rappahannock County? The first action we took was a request to close the trailheads at three, three trails that are located in close proximity to one another, one of which is extremely popular. Those closures are already in effect and notices have been posted by the National Park Service, and VDOT signs have been placed at those roads on which a trailhead is located at the end of each road. And those would include little double stairs at the terminus of Kaiser Run Road that is now closed to any park access. There's Mount Marshall Trail at the end of Mount Marshall Road, which is Route 625, closed. And then finally, the Thornton River Trail, which is at the terminus of Hull Score, that is closed. So you cannot access the park at those trailheads. In addition, we added Hazel River Trail after concerns from citizens that people were now flooding Woodward Road in the area of the Hazel River Trailhead, so that fourth one is now closed. And as of this morning, following a letter that, after our meeting on Monday to the National Park Service, asking for closure of all trailheads within Rappahannock County, the National Park Service notified me this morning that they have approved the closure of all trailheads within Rappahannock County, and the total number is 11. Some popular, some only occasionally used. But as I said the other night, there's been a game of whack-a-mole effect where you close one trail and traffic diverts to another. So to prevent that from continuing to happen by this weekend, and hopefully no later than midday tomorrow, National Park Rangers will have posted all 11 trailheads within Rappahannock County as being closed. And then the additional deterrent that we are imposing where applicable, we are working with VDOT to place signs that either say road closed through traffic, or in the case of trailheads that are adjacent to a road that cannot be closed, we're placing no parking signs. And then the only final detail here is that there are two trailheads on 211. Some people may have seen the incredible traffic at the Buck Hollow Trailhead, that's National Park Service jurisdiction, and we've asked them to place no parking signs there, and also at the trailhead farther to the west at Pass Mountain. So once all of this is done, visitors to the county will have no ability to access to the Shenandoah National Park from Rappahannock County and should have no reason to be visiting any of those areas where a trailhead is located. And I wanted to quickly thank the following individuals for the quick work on all of this, and that would include Jennifer Flynn, Superintendent of the National Park, one of her deputies, Sally Gerber. I want to thank Sheriff Compton, Deputy John Colina, Deputy Chris Houbin, and the other Rappahannock Sheriff's deputies who will be enforcing all of this. I want to thank David Jenkins, George Lee, and Mark Nesbit of VDOT. So thank you all. So again, just to summarize, as of midday tomorrow, we will have all trailheads in Rappahannock County closed to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Just to move down the table to Ms. Donahue, did you have anything to add for this agenda item, one of the emergency preparedness?
At this time, I do have the question if our citizens are in need of masks and they can't get them at the store, because nobody can, if we are doing anything to assist them in that need, I do know we have some citizens that believe that that's one way we could really help have the virus stay with the person that's got it. And I just want to thank here our Supervisor Whitson, Supervisor Smith, or Chair Smith for the fast action on this park issue. The state didn't seem to want to move as quickly, so taking it home and doing it ourselves with the help of all the people that Supervisor Whitson mentioned, I think is tremendous. And then I do know that I spoke with Chief Brown yesterday, and his station is gearing up with some paid EMS to be able to supplement where he's had some EMTs that did not want to run, understandably, because they have seniors at home or another reason. So I don't want the citizens to be in the wake of district worried that they won't be covered. Chief Brown is working on that as well at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Frazier?
I don't have as much to report. My tasks were much lighter, but we looked into working with the Sheriff's Department and VDOT on signage, and specifically went after trying to get those programmable highway signs, and they really aren't available unless we want to spend somewhere between $292 a day, $300 a day, $750 a week. We're over $800 depending on where we get them from. That may be, that may not be cost effective at all. So we looked into also temporary signage, lettered banners, and those can be obtained just a day or two, maybe three days out, for between $100 and $200 apiece, plus some sort of hardware to mount them or install them, poster poles. And speaking with Sheriff Compton on Monday, or Tuesday, rather, she suggested if we could get the message boards, we put one on 211 in the Amistille area, and then maybe another one at Massey's Corner. If we had a few more, we could put them at those, you know, roads like Cape Brown-Howell Road, maybe Harris-Howell Road, a few other roads saying, you know, no park access. It's just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I know you've done quite a bit of life work on the banners possibility. Did you have some numbers for us about how we could approach that solution?
Yeah, I think it depends on how much, how many we need. They're somewhere with mounting brackets, they would be between, you know, $150 to $200 per location. That would be a four-by-eight banner.
Thank you.
Banner would be, they would be easier to install as banners instead of like a large sign.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish, did you have anything for this discussion or this emergency preparedness agenda item?
Mr. Parrish, your mic is available.
Okay. No, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. I just wanted to give an update based on background from Monday and also discussions that we've been having for the last few weeks, just to echo what Mr. Whitson did in regards to housing for folks that might need to isolate, in particular our volunteer responders. Thank you for taking that forward, Mr. Whitson, and getting those details squared up, and I really feel like that is a wonderful thing that will keep people safer as we navigate this situation. In addition to the question of properties and where people can stay, Mr. Curry and I have discussed, you know, people need to be fed if all they're in isolation, and you know, that's something that we might be able to do if it becomes necessary. But I believe that there would be also plenty of volunteer response to that need, and we have anticipated that as well. that as well. I would ask staff, Mr. Curry, in regards to Ms. Donahue's concerns over masks. We do have a briefing scheduled for tomorrow morning at 10:00 at the courthouse. If we could maybe have a discussion of masks included in the briefing at that time, if there are any available, or any recommendations we could make to folks that may want to use them, I would think that would be an appropriate time to do that. I have been thinking that this would be a good time in the next week or so to call a meeting of the Public Safety Committee. We are a committee that meets quarterly, but I do think scheduling a meeting in the next week to 10 days would be in order so we can have as a group of discussion of the current situation. I think the banner signage that Mr. Fraser researched is an excellent option for us. It would be inexpensive and effective, I believe, and inexpensive enough that if a situation changed and we wanted to change the signage, it would be easy enough to do. And I do just want to be clear that as this situation unfolds, I do support and endorse any actions that the sheriff may deem to be appropriate in regards to public safety. The governor was very specific in his emergency declaration, and he fed a direct state and local governments to render appropriate assistance to prepare for this event, to alleviate any conditions resulting from the situation, and to implement recovery and mitigation options and activities so as to return impacted areas to pre-event conditions as much as possible. So I just have a vote of support for our sheriff and her discernment to navigate this situation as we move forward in the interest of public safety.
You want a vote or consensus?
I think a vote of confidence for the sheriff would be in order, and I mean, I would gladly make that motion.
I'll second it. Ron Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, and the first was made by myself, Ms. Smith. And with a vote and a second, I would look for a vote of board. Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
And I also. Are there other motions or action items we need to address as a result of this agenda item?
I guess if we really want to do those banners, I would have to have some sort of authority to spend up to X number of dollars, like maybe $1,200 maximum or something.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser.
Well, this is Gary. If it's the will of the board to do that, it's well within my purchasing authority. I would just need to note from where those funds would be taken, and I would suggest that there is funding remaining in the budget for broadband, which has not been used, an amount of $5,000, so you could transfer some of that to a different line, and we can do that administratively.
Do you need a motion for that, Mr. Curry?
No.
Okay.
But Mr. Fraser will want to know that he is, you know, so empowered for the means and methods, I suppose.
Well, I'll just say from my opinion, and I'll move through the board, that up to the amount of $2,000 from that particular budget line item, I would feel very comfortable with Mr. Fraser overseeing those actions and Mr. Curry paying those bills.
Okay. Could I have one proviso in there?
Yes, sir.
We work with the sheriff as to the exact language of those banners.
That sounds very reasonable to me. Mr. Parrish, do you have any, anything you'd like to add to this discussion?
No, I, you know, I hate to shut the parks off to the people that need to get out and get exercise and get some fresh air, but I understand that you need to err on the side caution here, and so I understand, I support what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Whitson?
Well, the only thing I would say, because it sounds like we're moving away from expensive programmable signage, I have heard from at least one constituent who mentioned other very popular entries into the county that perhaps could be signed, and one of those would be Crestville Road, and we don't have to get into these details, which we can do offline, but if we're going to go this slightly less expensive route, and Mr. Fraser comes up with a good system that can be replicated in multiple locations, I would just ask that we think about creatively how we get the word out without, you know, too much signage, but also not restricting ourselves only to the main entrance, or Massey's Corner, or 522, because clearly, especially those people who are always with these in the National Park, come into our county in multiple ways, so we should just think about that, where we post the signs.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donahue?
I'm in agreement with what Supervisor Fraser is doing. If I can help with different pricing, different banner companies and their pricing, I'm pretty happy to do that. The one thing that is perfectly clear about Rappahannock County is we get some pretty heavy winds, and a lot of signs are put up and down the next day because of the wind blows, so just recommend that we do what we can to make sure they're very secure in the ground and on posts.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser, did you have anything at this point to add?
No, those are all good suggestions, but it's been a while since I put any up, but we used to do that on a full-time basis, so I'll just have to refresh myself with these suggestions.
Very good. And I did look through some pricing options last evening with Mr. Fraser, and the kind of signs that we priced were the four-by-eight signs, a good durable vinyl, it included the grommets, so they would not be pulled, it did include wind slits, so they would, you know, be able to get through the blustery spring, and it seemed like it, you know, even if we included all the bells and whistles, we could still come in at less than $200 per banner, maybe a little bit more installed. But still, if we move forward with that $2,000, that should allow us to do six to eight, I would think at least, and allow us to move forward, and since we don't need a motion on this, I think we're all in consensus. Before we move away from this agenda item, I would be remiss, I don't believe I touched on the letter that I crafted after Monday's meeting and sent to Superintendent Flynn regarding requesting closure of Shenandoah National Park. That letter was drafted, and it was sent out on Tuesday to Superintendent Flynn, and then subsequently, Ms. May in the office did assist in getting it out to the other individuals we discussed in Monday's meeting. The Secretary of the Interior, Senator Warner, Senator Kane, Douglas Weber, State Senator Odenkane, and others have all received copies of that letter. It is certainly available for anyone else that would like to see it. And if other individuals are interested in invoicing their opinions directly to these individuals, particularly the Secretary of the Interior, their contact information is all available online.
Ms. Smith, this is Gary. I'll go ahead and take that letter and add it to this agenda item on Board docs, so the public can have access and see if they'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I do appreciate that. All right. I just want to check in at this point and see if anyone has anything to add before we move on to the next agenda item.
Madam Chair, this is Kier Whitson. I wanted to add, since you mentioned all the individuals in Congress and state-level representatives to whom the letter to the Shenandoah National Park Superintendent has been sent, that we learned yesterday Senators Kane and Warner did issue late last week to the Shenandoah National Park Superintendent a very, very strongly worded letter calling for overall closure of Shenandoah National Park. So hopefully that will have some effect, and then the letter that you drafted and issued, hopefully will bolster that effort. And clearly, if the Shenandoah National Park closes as a whole, that will take a lot of pressure off of all of us here as we try to hold the line on our local within Rappahannock County closures. So I just wanted to let everyone know that people are working from all sides on this.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Any other additions to this conversation? I don't see anyone at this time having anything else to add to this discussion, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda, D1, which is the Budget Work Session.
I assume you want me, Gary, to provide an introduction?
Yes, that would be great, Mr. Curry. Walk us through that.
As the board members are aware, and the public presented a budget, a balanced budget to the board on March 11th, situations have changed since then, and the board did manage to meet in a work session to discuss that proposed budget, to begin to craft it into, from a county administrator's proposed budget into a board supervisor's proposed budget. Included within Board docs is a table that shows the change log, let me pull that up, of items that have been included or incorporated into the budget since it was initially proposed by me on the 11th. Those include updating the school budget with updated school revenue information that was not yet available after the General Assembly action. So the school actually received additional revenue than what was anticipated when the budget was first proposed. It updates the registrar revenue because the budget bills also included additional revenue for the registrar. It also updates the Next Generation 911 capital project, which was initially planned to take place in FY '20, to push it off to FY 2021. We may have some portions of that project happen in FY '20, and just met with staff on that earlier this week. But the FY 2021 budget now, it includes funding to assume that all of the project will happen in FY '21, and if it doesn't, if some of it happens earlier, we can modify the budget later. But it also recognizes an increase in the budget, and so in the entirety of the NG911 project, there is a large amount of grant revenue from the state, and before, in FY '20, it was contemplated to be fully funded by the state. The sheriff and the 911 coordinator have asked for there to be a $50,000 local contribution from fund balance, your savings, to supplement that, which will likely be required now that some more firm quotes are available on the updated call handling equipment. Then there are a series of changes related to COVID-19, and I've listed them as number four and four A through four E. First is that we, I expect there to be reduced revenue from the meals and lodging tax, and we don't exactly know what that may be. Recall, we are speaking about July 1, in a year forward. We're hopeful that much of the direct impact from this emergency will be behind us on July 1, but we don't know. And so the budget reduces the revenue from meals and lodging by 50% for quarter one, and then reduces it by 25% for quarter two, and assumes to full allotment for quarter three and four. Similarly, in 4B takes the same stance for sales tax. We're not exactly sure right now the impact we'll see in sales tax because there is increased online purchasing happening, and our first window into seeing that won't happen until late April with the March numbers that come out of the state. After that, with the reduction in revenue, there needed to be a reduction on the expenditure side, and it includes a deferral of $118,000 of our pay-as-you-go capital for the schools to hold off and push off for a year. Part of the additional revenue received by the schools was for infrastructure, and it was a considerable sum, so they're able to do a lot of things anyway with the revenue they're getting from the state. And if revenue proves, it could potentially be added back in mid-year if their meals and lodging and sales tax come in higher than anticipated. The pay matters that we discussed significantly during my presentation and the classification and compensation study, which is underway, and by the way, we did receive the Page County information, and that is being incorporated into the study, my recommendation is to postpone implementation of the classification and compensation study at least until mid-FY 2021, and if we come to that point in time and can review revenue and we are on track, the board could consider bringing that back to the table. Otherwise, it would be pushed off until FY 2022. However, that said, the proposed budget as presented in the packet does still include the restructuring of the health insurance at the $80,000, as well as a 2% bonus, and the 2% bonus is included to align with the action of the state. The state has included funding for constitutional officers and state responsible employees, which would be those who report to constitutional officers and those in the social services, to receive a 2% bonus in December if revenue is available. There's a long road between here and there. If revenue is available from the state, then the board can grant that 2% bonus in December. If it doesn't come around and is not available, then the board could put that off as well and use that $80,000 to hedge against potential further reductions in revenue. And then lastly, with all those changes to, there's one thing that is not listed here, and I apologize, there is a $75,000 reduction in the transfer to the schools. That is included and listed out in the detailed documents. The school's budget proposed and adopted by the board and sent, the school board and sent to me, includes a 3% raise plus a step increase. The General Assembly incorporated a 2% raise for this year and a 2% raise for next year. So $75,000 is approximately equivalent to the value of 1% raise for the schools, and so with a $75,000 reduction to the transfer to the schools, it would still allow them to move forward with a 2% raise plus a step increase, which I've been told is equivalent to approximately 1.5%. With all those things taken into account, the board would not have to increase the fire service or county general fund real estate tax rate, and would still be able to make a transfer of $228,742 to the fire service fund that could be used for a transition to paid EMS, and there would be in entirety $300,000 set in the fire service fund contingency to provide for overall services there. Again, all those changes are made and incorporated into the document that was attached. I included the original document attached as well for comparison purposes, and none of this would require a tax increase. Coming out of this agenda item, it would be appropriate for the board potentially to make changes to what is presented in before you, but identify what the board to make changes to what is presented in before you, but identify what the board would like to advertise for public hearing to the community as we seek their input on the budget. So this, the decision made today would not be what the county's budget would be, but what county budget would be placed before the community to solicit their input. Also, the board should identify what tax rates should be presented to the public to solicit their input. And you could advertise those tax rates that are needed to balance the budget or I've recommended in the past, advertise tax rates that are slightly above that so you could accommodate the public if they come to you and seek additional services. With that, I've probably spoken too much and I will take any questions the board may have after I unmute the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, for walking us through those items. I know that it is a lot to address and I appreciate that you wrote it all out for us and walked us through them as well. I guess I would look to go to all the members of the board at this time for any discussion on this matter and I'll start with Mr. Parrish.
Okay, from what I see, so far it looks very well thought out. I was leaving out predicting what's going to happen with our income or expenses, so I don't, this seems to be to serve the purpose for now, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Parrish. Mr. Whitson?
Thank you, Chair Smith. Mr. Curry, I really want to commend you on incredible work in putting all this together in your presentation. It benefits us, but most importantly, it benefits the public. It's a highly digestible explanation and the change log, which you used here is excellent, so thank you for that. My only immediate question in the context of the summary change log presented and that members of the public were going to this meeting might be looking at. In item 4A, I understand it, but just want to make sure everyone else does. I believe what your revenue reforecast projections are a reflection of the share of the whole you're expecting as opposed to a reduction, if I'm not mistaken, because you described logically that in Q2, as we get farther away from this crisis, the revenue reduction would be 25%. So thus here, you're presenting 100% minus 25, so it's 75% of what we would otherwise expect. Is that correct?
That's correct. I said it differently than I wrote it, so hopefully that wasn't confusing.
Okay, well, I don't know if you did. It took me a little while to get, wrap my head around it. And I would only ask, I realize there's no, there's no science in trying to predict revenue, especially in such uncertain times. I assume these are very conservative estimates and my only question, given that we're now, from the governor's latest order, all basically home into June, if the 25% is not conservative enough for Q2, that would be my only comment. And I don't want to trip things up too much. I realize this is a budget for the public to comment on, so perhaps I'm being premature or overly cautious in just asking questions about the Q2 projection.
No, I think that's a very good point and I would say that the board has additional flexibility. As I noted with the bonus, for example, scheduled for December, that could be held off if revenue misses further. One quarter of the meals and lodging is approximately $75,000. So if you were to miss the entirety of quarter one, we'd be short $30 some odd thousand dollars from the projection and you could make that up with a bonus. You could also make it up with pushing off some of the capital items in, further into the future. So it wouldn't make sense for us to jump right into those capital items in July. We would wait until revenue starts coming in and dependent on that revenue, then we would settle free or not.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Whitson, did you have anything additional to add?
No, I just want us all to think about that because I, I realize meals and lodging tax revenue is not, is not a wide share, not even close of our revenue, but just want to be mindful of the fact it's not insignificant. We are a tourist-based economy and we need to really think hard about what that revenue stream is going to look like for the foreseeable future. So I just wanted to highlight that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
She should now be up.
Thank you very much. I agree with Mr. Whitson. I am hearing that some of our businesses are not going to make it through this terrible time. I want to thank Mr. Curry for obviously a well-thought-out zig when we wish we could die with dealing with all the changing environment that's going on right now. I am wondering if Mr. Curry is hearing anything from the state as far as any assistance counties will be receiving, given so much of our income is going away.
I'm listening and I've not heard anything yet that's of course very of great interest to many localities. Our risk is generally less than many because we so heavily rely on real estate and personal property tax. However, at some point in time, if this drags on for a long period of time, those revenue sources could be at risk. So there is a lot of discussion at the state level amongst localities on revenue and whether there'll be support from the state or feds. The current legislation from the feds and based on our small population wouldn't provide much revenue to us if it had to the state to us. But that is certainly critical information and we continue to listen every day.
Maybe, but I-
Did you have anything to add to that, Ms. Donahue?
Other than the trickle-down effect of people going out of business, obviously affects other purchases that they want, or maybe having to sell things that will affect part of income from a county state.
Thank you. It's definitely a huge concern. Mr. Frazier?
I'm pretty much in agreement with everything that's been said, but if we're going to be, when do we actually discuss what items we're going to advertise?
Well, I would think that would be appropriate to do now if there are things you have concerns with.
Well, on the heels of what Ms. Donahue just said about, you know, business is not, maybe not surviving this, I totally agree that that is a very, very important thing to take into consideration and I think it's very real. And with that, I think, you know, there really is only one raise in this budget and I think that we should scale it back just, even though it's miniscule in the shape of the entire budget, it sends a message that we're all going to suffer through this together. That's category 1103. We don't even have time to discuss this budget properly. We don't even know when we're going to be able to have a public hearing. I think we should just scale it all back.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I would just add that I hear many other locality are being mindful of non-essential spending and saving money at this point in any way that we can with these revenue projections and anticipated expenses in other areas is certainly a concern. So I do think we should adopt a policy as similar localities and perhaps something could be drafted by next Monday. To that extent, that we are mindful of how we spend taxpayers' money and knowing this will be a tough year for a lot of people, we do everything in our power to be exceptionally good stewards of public funds. I have a similar concern to Mr. Frazier. Based on the budget we passed on my first year on the board, we gave raises to certain employees and not others and it created an ill will. The next year, we went through the budget cycle. We spent money on the Baker-Tilly study in order to be even-handed and address the raises all at one time and to be able to explain what we were doing and have a rationale for why we were paying what we did. And so my concern is with no other employee in this budget having a raise, it goes against the logic of the money being spent on the Baker-Tilly study. We have not reviewed the Baker-Tilly study and don't know what it says in regards to this increase. And I suggest we put that, I believe it's $10,000, in the Baker-Tilly line for possible increases, if it is possible to do that at a later time. Would that be something we could do, Mr. Curry?
I'm not sure what you mean by the $10,000 for Baker-Tilly.
There's $10,000 in the line for the increase for the county attorney.
Okay.
That's the only raise in the budget. I think that should go into the Baker-Tilly study increase line rather than treat it as a one-off, everyone else's increases.
Yeah, and quite frankly, I guess I forgot that that was in there. He's essentially a contractual employee with the board and that supplement would not be included in the Baker-Tilly study. But certainly, you know, that's completely up to the board on whether it should be included in the version to be advertised for public hearing and eventually adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I guess that kind of sums up the discussion on the budget and I do appreciate all of the work you've put into making changes and anticipating the situation as best for Mr. Curry to forecast these changes. I'll just go through the progression one more time in case anybody has any additional comments regarding the budget. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I'm a little confused about this. Are you suggesting we add money to the Baker-Tilly expense?
I'm suggesting that we take the increase that the county attorney is requesting and add it to the Baker-Tilly line item.
When-
And review it as part of the whole pay classification rather than as a one-off increase.
And let me be clear that this budget does not have any money to fund the classification and compensation study that will be provided by Baker-Tilly. That's been removed to make the other expenditures fit. All it includes from a compensation standpoint is the redirection of funds that the county would have been spending on health insurance and switching that over to salaries I discussed previously and the $80,000 for the bonus, of which a portion of that is back-supported by state revenue, relatively small portion, but a portion.
So we would only be having one employee asking for a raise then, Mr. Curry, and everyone else would be eligible for bonus, is what you're saying?
Well, he would be eligible for a bonus too because he's a constitutional officer.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not really in favor of adding more to the Baker-Tilly line.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, I need, I need some clarification as well. Mr. Curry, if you wouldn't mind, what is contemplated in the Baker-Tilly expense line? I mean, that's a fundamental question. What does that represent?
Well, I mean, there is no Baker-Tilly expense line. What the, my original proposed budget included was a lump sum of funding within the board supervisor's contingency line that could later be distributed to the different departments to implement the recommendations of the pay and classification study. And during the work session, there was a discussion that the study could be implemented over at least two years, thereby splitting what was, I believe, around $170,000 of pay adjustment and ramp it up over two years. What is included in the revised package before you is $0, with the understanding that we don't know what the revenue is going to be and we're redirecting essentially all of that to pay DMS. And if revenue proves in FY 2021 or 2022, the pay and classification study could come back to the forefront, a supplemental appropriation could be made to recognize the revenue that's coming in and then allocate it as deemed appropriate by the board.
Mr. Curry, could we be able to move that $10,000, this is Ms. Smith, to the bonus line and increase the bonuses for everyone if that was something we could do?
Yes, you could certainly do that.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson, if I may interrupt you?
Just as a matter of process, clearly we're not adopting the budget today because we haven't yet had all the comment or input. So I would only say we leave it alone. I recognize this meeting, the premise of this meeting was for further discussion of the budget. Clearly, events have sort of went a bit of a detailed discussion here on the budget. We focus primarily on emergency matters. I would just say we leave it alone in its current form because we're still not through the entire budget review process nor have received public input.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donahue?
Hold on. Okay.
Thank you. I concur with leaving what we have here at the moment until we get into the public comment, but am I understanding correctly that part of what we're doing right now is deciding what particular areas we want to focus on in the public comment?
Well, what you're, the budget in its entirety and the tax rates needed to support it and at levels which you could levy need to be shared with the public so they know what they're commenting on when they come to you during a public hearing. And so if, for example, the board proposed a budget that cut expenditures by $3 million, eliminated many services, the public may come to you with certain comments. If the board increased funding by $3 million, a entirely different group of people may come to you and say they don't want their taxes raised by many, many cents on the dollar. So what is provided to the public to gather their input is important and it has to be balanced. And so what is presented in Board Docs is a balanced budget that the board can use to solicit input from the public. After you solicit that input, you will continue to massage the document and at some point adopt the budget.
Thank you. And I don't have any other comments.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I think what we're really trying to do is figure out what we're going to be advertising.
Correct.
Right.
So that was kind of the premise of what led my input is that we need to advertise something, we need to get it in front of the public and I think that we all need to share the same burden. And right now, I've been trying to, you know, read stuff coming out of Richmond and right now, the indicators are that the 3% raises are in jeopardy because of revenue shortfall, or rather, projected revenue shortfall.
Yeah, there is additional set of raises for 2022 that are also revenue-tested. So there's a long journey between here and there. that are also revenue-tested. So there's a long journey between here and there.
Thank you.
That is why I made the comments that I did that I think we need to massage it right now before we advertise it.
Did you want to make a motion to that effect, Mr. Frazier?
Well, I would. I think if we advertise the budget as presented with no tax increase and with the $10,000 moved to the general fund from the category 1103.
All right. And should we, did you want to do the the tax increase that we would advertise for the public hearing as part of the same motion or should we do that separate?
It can be either.
Let's go ahead and navigate through this item then. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Excuse me, I got interrupted by some phone calls coming in, so I did not hear Mr. Frazier's motion. Could you repeat that, please?
My motion would be to advertise the budget as presented, this revised budget by Mr. Curry, with the provision that we move the, I think it's $9,100 from line category 1103. You move that to the general fund and advertise it with no tax increase.
By general fund, I assume you mean the amount that would otherwise need to be pulled from the general fund balance?
Yes.
Okay.
So 1103, I don't have that in front of me.
That's the county attorney's budget, that the county attorney has requested increase from $45,000 supplement to $55,000 supplement. However, the amount that was budgeted in 2020 was a little bit off, so it's $9,100, I think, is Mr. Frazier stating.
So we have a motion. I hope we're all clear on the motion. Do I have a second?
Let me make sure people are muted.
Thank you, Gary. So my statement was that we have a motion, Chair Smith, and I'm wondering, we have a motion on the table in regards to how to advertise the budget. Do we have a second?
Everybody is unmuted at this time.
Thank you, Gary. It would appear that the motion would fail for lack of a second. So do I have a motion as to how we should advertise this budget, please?
I'll make a motion and we advertise it as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Kira Whitson.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson.
For discussion, please.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Parrish and a second by Mr. Whitson to advertise the budget as presented by Mr. Curry in the packet today. And I'll just move through this succession for additional comments. Mr. Frazier?
For additional comments, I made a motion to reduce the budget by $9,100 and it failed, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue?
I am fine with moving forward with it as is with the understanding that we're going to have public comment and I will definitely be taking feedback from everyone in my district to see if they have any concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Whitson?
Thank you very much. Two points. First, I believe that the motion of Mr. Frazier that didn't receive a second combined the tax rate advertised as well, tax rates advertised as well as moving the pay increase in the county attorney section of the proposed budget into a general fund category. I would only say that we should, one, perhaps consider a bifurcated vote so that we vote separately on the tax increase and then separately on this question that has now been discussed regarding the single request for a pay increase in the current proposed budget. So that would be one comment. My second comment is, I, under the current situation we're all in, I'm highly sensitive to the fact that we all have to hunker down. I personally don't expect I'll be getting any pay increases soon. So my reluctance to second Mr. Frazier's motion is in no way an indication that I've lost sight of that. I simply want to be efficient here and move forwards so that we can get into a public input period in the budget process. So I'm by no means suggesting that I'm supporting any pay increases at this time. I also am not supporting any tax increases at this time, which is why I think we should structure these motions in a bifurcated way. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I just want to be cognizant of the fact that this is just a projected budget. It's usually not what ends up being the final budget. That's what counts, is what we vote on the pen.
Thank you.
Is the important thing, is to be moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish, and I apologize. I think there was some buffering there and I did not mean to interrupt you. Mr. Curry, can you remind me of where we are in terms of, we probably need a motion for what to advertise? Is that correct?
That is correct. So you have a motion right now on the table to advertise as presented by Mr. Parrish, seconded by Mr. Whitson. I will say that at the end of the day, when you adopt a budget, it includes language in the appropriation for things like the revenue that anticipated that we will receive for the schools from the state, that their appropriation is contingent on that revenue. And so should a revenue reforecast of the state happen and funding not be passed through for raises, then you're not obligated to appropriate the full amount. You would be only responsible for the full amount unless what was shorted by the state. So we do cover ourselves for that at the end of the day with your appropriation and budget language.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And in regards to the motion and the second that are on the table, they include, to my recollection, they don't include the advertising the increase.
I believe, yeah, I believe it's only the budget.
Okay, that's, I appreciate that as well. Thank you very much.
All right, and this is Kira Whitson, so that takes care, sorry, I apologize for that. So if it's just, if it's the budget itself and not the advertising increases, I would draw my comment on the bifurcated motions.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson.
For the need for them.
I think this virtual medium presents certain challenges and I think everyone, as we move through them, for, you know, staying on board as best we can. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Nay.
I also. That takes us to the tax rate to advertise for the public hearing in regards to the budget. And just for the sake of simplicity, I will make a motion that we recommend advertising the 2 cent increase, even though we are hopeful that we can navigate this with Mr. Curry's budget that no increase is needed. And then, thank you, Mr. Parrish.
And I want to clarify that the remainder of the tax rates as listed in the table for fire levy, real estate, personal property tax, fire levy, personal property tax, and motor vehicle license tax would all be advertised level.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, for that clarification. So in regards to the motion made by myself and the second by Mr. Parrish to advertise the 2 cent increase for the general fund tax rate, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Frazier?
Nay.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Nay.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Motion carries. That takes us to the next item. Is there any housekeeping we need to do on this item, Mr. Curry?
No, ma'am, but I will go back to the change log table and insert the school item that I inadvertently left out just for clarity going forward if we look back and so citizens look at that. They understand. While it's in the budget, it just missed out on that table.
Thank you. I appreciate that as well. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, item D2, the board budget meeting schedule reminder. Mr. Curry, if you could walk us through that, please?
Yes, the schedule remains the same right now and the importance of today's actions on the budget is related to our newspaper cycle and the fact that our budget public hearing is scheduled for April 20th. It must be advertised seven days in advance, so that means I will need to get the budget and tax rate documentation to the newspaper next week before they go to press. It is, remains my plan to move forward with the established schedule and plan to hold that public hearing on the 20th. However, given the circumstances, it would have to be held electronically. And in the advertisement, we would very plainly provide to the public that their public comment can be provided to the county in multiple ways. In written hard copy form delivered to my office by date certain. In email form delivered to my office at the admin@rapaha County VA.gov. By telephone call that's transcribed at my office by date certain. And then lastly, that we may be able to solicit input through our online meeting process. Although, and I continue to stress "may" because we never know when the technological support may may fail us at the last minute. And so if people really want to have their input provided, they should do so in advance. If the documents are provided in advance, there's no reason why that should not be a viable method and it would be in keeping with our emergency ordinance. So the next step would be the 20th public hearing, followed by work sessions available for the board, either special dates, the 27th, or on the day of your regular meeting, May 4th, then May 11th, May 13th. All those dates falling before the statutory date by which you must adopt the school budget, unless things change by the governor, which is May 15th. In the last two years, the board has balanced the entire budget and adopted the entire budget prior to May 15th. That is helpful. The earlier you can adopt your budget, the earlier Commissioner Revenue and Treasurer can jump on their work to get the tax bills out, which means the earlier people can start paying taxes. And some do pay as soon as they get the statement, their invoice. And that helps our cash flow perspective, which may be very important in the coming year. Even though we have a considerable fund balance to help us in times of uncertain revenue. Happy to add anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Curry. So I just wanted to pose the question. For the April 20th meeting then, we do have the capability to hold a public hearing using the technology that we have available?
Yes, and so it would be, it's, you must receive comment from the public and part of your emergency ordinance states that there may be multiple ways you do that, as I just noted. It is my intent to receive feedback from those that would participate in the Zoom meeting. And we'll see how that goes in a little bit when we get to public comment. But strongly encourage people to provide their questions in advance that would be read into the record by myself or somebody else during the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. At this point, if we could just open everyone's mics for a moment in case anyone else has any questions, please?
You mean board members?
Yes, please.
Chair, this is Debbie. I do know that there's been an effort in the county to find areas where people with poor internet capability could actually go in their vehicles and sit in their vehicle and have good service. I know Xfinity opened up theirs with no login required. I would recommend that we do something to let folks know that may not be able to do this from home where the locations are available, that they could actually sit in and take part in this very important process.
Yes, the schools is working on that. I seen Dr. Grimsley is listening to us. And I can work with her and her staff, collaborate to make sure the word gets out broadly where citizens can find available free public Wi-Fi.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything additional for this agenda item? All right. Well, thank you. That'll take us to item E1, other business. For a public hearing of special exception, 20-02-1, Miller more than one dwelling on a lot of parcel. I'll just say that this, if no one minds me queuing up this discussion. Actually, Mr. Curry, if you could just do a quick introduction, then I would like to speak because this pertained to my district.
Yes, ma'am. This public hearing, the public hearing identified is, was advertised in the newspaper. Adjacent property holders were provided notice, all required by our local ordinance and the Code of Virginia. However, April 6th regular board meeting is planned to be electronic only pursuant to your emergency ordinance. And as I read earlier in the meeting, the definition of essential business is included in that emergency ordinance. And I guess I could read that right now as a refresher, that it is essential business is defined as those items without the passage of which the public interest would be irrevocably harmed. Reviewing that language with Mr. Goff, who I should have noted had to step away to prepare for court, online court proceedings. We were challenged to come to the conclusion that a land use matter such as this would rise to that level of essential business. And that's all I can offer at this time. This item is included to recognize that fact and essentially delay the matter to a later time when we are able to take business with a physical corner.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I just wanted to say with this being in Piedmont District, this is a special exception that would provide a way to have employment for people in a time where work may be very hard to find. I think if we have means to conduct the public hearing, that we should certainly consider doing so. We've already had it advertised for Monday, so money has been spent. And I would just request a formal opinion from the county attorney as to whether or not we can undertake this on Monday. And if his opinion is that we can move it forward on Monday, that we do. And I would just turn to the other members of the board for the input at this. Actually, I'll go ahead and put that in the form of a motion at this time and ask for a second and then we can have further discussion on this point.
Ms. Chair, perhaps it would be if there's a majority of the board that would like to consider this as essential business, your motion could state that you considered essential business and that the public hearing go forward on April 6th, unless the county attorney issues opinion that that is not appropriate with the emergency ordinance.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Curry, for helping me with those words and that would be my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Parish. Uh, so I'm gonna move down, uh, the table, uh, for a, a vote. Mr. Parish?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
And Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you. I also. All right, so that takes us to the next agenda item, item E2, Solid Waste Management Operation Discussion and Decision. With, uh, Mr. Curry, if you could, uh, tee that up for us, please?
Uh, if I could just have one second to make sure I'm documenting that motion appropriately.
Thank you. Thank you for both being scribe and, uh, operator today.
Okay, as, uh, the board is, um, aware and citizens are, uh, quite aware, uh, operations at our refuse, uh, and recycling centers have, uh, been in, uh, a non-standard format for some time. And, uh, the, uh, Board Supervisor at Rappahannock, Board Supervisors of Page County, uh, both agree to the terms of a new agreement, uh, through which Page County staff will, uh, pick up and haul our waste and recyclables, uh, back to Page where the recyclables will be sorted, baled, and sent for revenue recuperation and refuse will be landfillled in their landfill. Uh, that is done and signed by all parties as of last week. Uh, in order to make use of that contract, the county needs to move forward with, uh, purchasing certain equipment for the sites to include, uh, waste compactors and containers, containers for, for compacted trash, containers for recyclables, containers for metal, containers for walkie, et cetera. Uh, some time ago, in anticipation of the agreement being, uh, finalized, I solicited, uh, put out to bid, uh, those items, compactors and containers, and received, uh, a few different bids and there's a bid tabulation attached to the agenda that I'll bring up here. We received three bids. Uh, BWE, Baker's Waste Equipment, uh, is the apparent low bidder for the items that were bid and the quantities that were bid. Uh, I have discussed the, uh, equipment and containers with, uh, some of the citizens who came forward to, uh, volunteer to work with me on these matters and we're not exactly, have not exactly nailed down precisely all that is needed and I believe that we may want to buy one extra of one of, or of, uh, the items. Uh, and that's why you'll see on this sheet, the total of all items for BWE is 215,970, which is approximately, I think, the number that I shared with the board as we were working through negotiations. Uh, in addition to buying equipment, there will be, um, work needed to be done at the refuse and, uh, recycling centers, uh, to include, uh, removal of the existing pits or repurposing of those pits, uh, installation of, uh, new electrical services, and then some site work for realigning drives and whatnot. Uh, oh, those matters are under discussion by myself and some of those citizens as well and Page County staff is helping with that. Uh, it's, it's my recommendation at this point, uh, that the board, uh, allow this to move forward, uh, by taking a couple actions. Uh, one of those is to provide a supplemental appropriation from your fund balance, uh, your savings to, uh, provide funding to pay for the equipment and for the preliminary site work that needs to be done, of which there, there may need to be, uh, additional investment there. Uh, that, uh, is summarized on, uh, this form and it can be confusing, so let me walk through it. Uh, there is already in your capital fund an undesignated amount of money of 123,250 for, uh, general fund projects. It was originally contemplated to go towards, uh, work along Gay Street, but that has been slowed by the pace of the, um, the building study after all of the refuse matters came to light, uh, the order of precedence came up. So, this form would suggest that you would reallocate that, uh, those capital dollars from the general fund holding account to a new capital line for refuse upgrade, as well as appropriate 156,750 dollars from your fund balance to make a total available budget at this time of 280,000 dollars. Uh, let me step back and, uh, show that breakdown would be 230,000 dollars for equipment and 50,000 dollars for, uh, site work. Uh, and that's a very rough estimate right now for the site work. Um, in meeting with the, uh, citizens who are assisting me, uh, we haven't completely nailed down the compactors that we should be looking at and we're working through, uh, life cycle cost analysis right now, uh, to make sure we're not buying the cheapest today, but is the most expensive over a 10-year period with maintenance and whatnot. Uh, so, I am seeking approval from the board for the supplemental appropriation, but I would also like the award approval to BWE for up to 230,000 dollars, understanding that we may choose to back up and, uh, solicit bids from some others for different types of compactors, may, uh, and that also may, decision may be made based on the availability. There may be some that's on the shelf and can be shipped right away and we think we have a solution for Flatwood that as soon as we can get, uh, compactors to the site, we could quickly, uh, pivot to a new, uh, way of managing the site that would be, uh, much better for the community. Uh, so I know I've said a lot and it could be confusing and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Uh, I, I, is everyone's mic open? Uh, and I think that way we could, uh, just have, uh, comment on this.
Uh, yes, now board members' mics are open.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Parish, did you have any questions or concerns about this?
Uh, no, I don't. I think that, um, sooner we get, uh, through with this, the better and so I'm in favor of what's presented here.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Whitson, did you have any additional concerns?
I think my, my only question departs a little bit from, um, the figures presented and it really goes to a qualitative question and, Mr. Curry, um, obviously this is going to be a big, big upfront capital expenditure. I know I've communicated with my members in the community to note that our operating expenses, they're expected to decrease on an annual basis to, you know, at least 200,000 dollars a year. Um, so as, as people look at these numbers, I think there's some, a shock factor there where we're talking about possibly 200,000, 230,000 dollars upfront capital expenditures, but just wanted to emphasize for the public's benefit that those capital expenditures should be, um, should be recouped in the form of, uh, annual savings right off the bat. Uh, but my question to you is, uh, because we are soon, very soon making a commitment to purchasing significant assets from a vendor, a single vendor, I just want to make sure you, you, uh, have a chance to explain to all of us on the board that you've conducted sufficient due diligence with respect to the reliability and reputation of Baker's Waste Equipment.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, of course, it was all procured through proper state and local laws, so that, that's important. Uh, but, uh, the, uh, the vendor comes highly recommended by, uh, our partners in Page County, uh, who've used their equipment in the past and believes it is, uh, is, is suitable. Uh, the containers themselves, uh, they're pretty standard when you, is, and with the bid documents, fix the thickness of the material and, and, uh, some various specifics on, uh, the, the rollers and different matters like that and how they're finished. And so the bids were apples to apples on that front. Uh, it's not the Cadillac, but it's also, uh, not the Yugo. Um, the compactors, that's a much different discussion and there's some very significantly different technology available, whether you're, you use a hydraulic ram, which is, uh, a large percentage of the sites that you see, there's a hydraulic ram that pushes the waste into the container, uh, through multiple cycles. The, the other technology is through an auger technology, uh, which are able to generally take larger pieces of waste and break them up, for example, a couch, uh, whereas a ram may not efficiently do that. Uh, they tend to be more expensive upfront, uh, but may last longer. And so, uh, they also tend to require, uh, greater draw of power and, uh, we only have, uh, the ability to have bigger than a 10 horsepower motor at Flatwood because of the availability to 10 horsepower, uh, to three-phase power. I'm sorry for being so technical, uh, whereas Amosville is well off the beaten path and does not have three-phase power, so we're somewhat limited. So, we're working through those details now and, which is why I asked for the authority to award up to, uh, knowing that we may only buy the containers from BWE or the containers in a, in a couple compactors and then pivot over to different type, uh, if we can buy them for, uh, Flatwood where we have three-phase power.
Uh, Ron Frazier here, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Did, did, uh, Mr. Curry, did you have the, uh, opportunity to, uh, 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 at least, uh, analyze or, or consider a phase converter at Amosville?
Uh, yes, um, everything that I have reviewed, uh, indicates that a, a phase converter is problematic and, uh, will be more trouble than it's worth. The, uh, the unit that is specified for Amosville is actually, actually has a three-phase 10 horsepower motor, but it uses a variable frequency drive to, to make it work with single phase. You can only use a VFD up to about a 10 horsepower motor.
Right.
Any other questions or concerns in regard to, uh, the action that we're, to take on this today?
Um, Madam Chair, this is Kira Whitson. Uh, one thing I wanted to add, especially for the public's benefit, um, our current vendor update, uh, in recent months has taken a lot of hits because of, of the appearance of the Flatwood and Amosville sites. And I just want to emphasize that, um, in fact, Updike has really been doing as much as possible to work with us to provide an interim solution by way of these roll-off containers to help us, uh, survive this transition into a permanent and much better solution for the consumer. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Updike and particularly, um, Carl Thornhill, who has been spearheading the effort to move these roll-off containers in and out as, as possible. It's not ideal for them, it's not ideal for us. Um, certainly it's a cost to the county to, to use this interim solution and not insignificant one, but I just want to make sure we all, uh, understand that Updike has been working as hard as possible to help us during this transition period. So, I just wanted to add that to the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson, and that is a good point and we have, uh, collaborated with them for, uh, a long time on these, um, refuse stations and, um, we really do appreciate, uh, you know, with the unanticipated circumstances that we faced with, um, the pits not being able to be used anymore. Uh, it's not been an ideal temporary situation, but it has been something that we have been able to make work and they have been responsive when we have had issues and I do also very much appreciate, uh, Updike's role as we, as we move forward with these changes. Um, if there's no further discussion, uh, do I have a motion in regards to these actions today?
Chair, can I, can I make one point or one clarification?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Um, when, uh, Mr. Curry mentions this isn't a Cadillac, but it's not a Yugo and lifespan of what we are purchasing, I think it would be beneficial to clarify, uh, to the citizens what we're expecting, um, so that they are not surprised in 10 years or whatever when this comes up again.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Curry, could you, uh, give us a little background on that?
Yeah, we believe that containers will last a considerable amount of time, should be 20 years. It's the compactors that we are really focusing on to make sure we are, um, blending the appropriate amount of capital with expectation of life. Um, hydraulic ram compactors do tend to take more maintenance, uh, relatively than an auger and we're trying to put some numbers to that to, uh, make sure we're making a prudent decision. Uh, with the containers, there's not a lot of option. Uh, there are some different, uh, bottom shapes that, you know, may help, but with proper, uh, use and maintenance, they should be fine.
Thank you. Right, if, if there's no additional discussion, uh, is there a motion in regards to these actions that we could take today?
Madam Chair, this is Kira Whitson. I'll make the motion, um, that we approve supplemental appropriations to fund, uh, the purchase of refuse equipment and site improvements and the supplemental appropriation come from a capital fund transfer in general fund balance as described by Mr. Curry and in addition that we award, uh, the purchase of ne- necessary refuse and recycling equipment as outlined by Mr. Curry, um, to Baker's Waste Equipment Inc. in the amount of 230,000 dollars.
And just to clarify, up to 230, depending on what we actually purchased from?
Yeah, I'll, I'll revise that. I apologize. Up to 230,000 dollars.
All right, uh, sounds like we have a motion. Do we have a, a second?
Second. I, I should-
We're here to fix the problem.
Yes, I do want to clarify, sorry this is scary, that I have looked at your supplemental appropriations to date, um, and I do want to show that to you that, um, we, we do have capacity even after doing this relative to the 1% that would trigger a public hearing. Uh, so just want to make sure clear that we did look at that and you are okay with that.
Very good. Thank you, Bennett. I believe we have a motion, uh, Mr. Whitson and second by Ms. Donahue. So, uh, Mr. Parish, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
And Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I also. Uh, that takes us, takes us to the last item on the agenda, the public comment period. Um, it's a little bit different today on this electric, uh, electronic, uh, platform. Normally, we would ask that, uh, folks identify themselves and the district that they're from and, um, at this point, I'll turn the public comment over to Mr. Curry since he has the reins today.
Thank you. Uh, we did include in the, uh, public comment, item on board docs as I'm displaying on the screen and, uh, and, and we're trying to push this out also as we, uh, send the agenda out to our regular distribution list, uh, the methods through which citizens, uh, or others can comment. And you can see what was provided for this me- meeting, email, phone, and, uh, the Zoom livestream, uh, may. Uh, I did not receive any emails or phone calls, phone messages, uh, for that. So, we can attempt to move, uh, to a Zoom process and each person, uh, who is, uh, participating should have an opportunity to raise their hand within the Zoom platform. Uh, if you do raise your hand, I will be able to see it on my participant list. I can recognize you and unmute your mic and then you, uh, will have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And for people that wish to raise their hand, it's in the upper right hand of everyone's screen, I believe, where the three dots are and it says "more" underneath. That's where you should be able to find the raise your hand options. So at this point, if there's anyone that would like to participate via the Zoom platform, um, please raise your hand.
I have a, and of course, I'm limited by the device name that is, uh, provided, so I have a Woodworth's iPad and I'm going to unmute your mic. have a Woodworth's iPad, and I'm going to unmute your mic.
This is Paige, for those that don't know my first name, Paige Linn Jackson, District. My comment is, I think it is very poor taste to advertise a tax increase when people are out of jobs and may not be able to afford their real estate tax. I also think it's a very poor taste that the county attorney, despite all his issues, is even shown to have a cost increase, a pay increase. At least the highest, including Commonwealth Attorney, is the highest paid employee in the county. I just think that is terrible, and I don't know where you stand on reducing it or not. Ask that. His advice Monday was absolutely wrong. He obviously hadn't even read the Attorney General's opinion. But I just think that I disagree with having voted today, and I think that should have been moved as Mr. Frazier recommended, and I don't think you should advertise a tax increase. If everyone else is probably, just tighten your belt, we're just going to have to take something now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blaney. Anyone else wishing to speak, please use the three dots in the upper right-hand corner where the raised hand option is.
I have no other raised hands.
Thank you. All right, that leads us to the last agenda item, the item to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Let me make sure everybody's unmuted.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question before we do that. Are we anticipating canceling any of the upcoming meetings as identified on our budget meeting schedule?
Thank you, sir. That's an excellent, excellent point. You do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, and it would be my recommendation that you cancel that, having made it through all the business to date. And then your regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, and as discussed earlier, you do have business to manage on that, including approving the AP and holding the public hearing, and I'll have to update that document when I return to the office.
Well, thank you for that clarification. I think that we should, I'll make that motion, I guess, to cancel the Friday morning meeting.
Okay, I think if we're going to do that, we need to make it a two-part motion, Mr. Frazier, to amend the agenda, to add this agenda item for cancellation of tomorrow's meeting, and then also within the same motion to actually cancel that meeting.
I think for housekeeping, you're probably correct, so I'll do that. I'll first make the motion to amend the agenda to discuss or change the budget meeting schedule.
Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier, would you care to vote on that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Hold on.
Hey, I apologize. For some reason, I just got kicked out of the meeting. Before I say anything, I need to do that, like it's happened in the last maybe 45 seconds.
Could you recap the motion, please, Mr. Curry?
Yes, there's a discussion as to whether the meeting previously noticed and scheduled for tomorrow morning needs to happen. In order to discuss that, there's a motion to add to the agenda revision of the budget meeting schedule by Mr. Frazier, seconded by Mr. Parrish, which we've, you're now voting on, and it's your turn.
I'll vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we were, Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Did I get everybody, Gary?
I don't believe I heard from Ms. Donahue.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Thank you. So that takes to the amending the agenda, and so we need a motion to cancel, if I'm correct.
I'll make that motion now to cancel the Friday morning meeting.
Very good.
Friday, April 3rd, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. So that's the motion to cancel tomorrow morning's meeting, as carried. And with that, I believe that concludes all of our business. We have a meeting scheduled for Monday, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, this is Kira Whitson. Just a reminder, just a reminder to mention what we're going to be doing tomorrow morning instead of that budget-related meeting. I thought you would want to take that up quickly for the public's benefit.
Yes, so tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., there's a briefing scheduled at the courthouse, and the briefing will include me, our sheriff, Kevin Williams, our emergency manager, and Mr. Curry, our county administrator. So we'll be streamed briefing, and we'll have more comments tomorrow, and additional briefings to be scheduled as needed after tomorrow's run.
Or would that be streamed? Sorry, Mr. Ben.
I believe, and currently, if there's other platforms, Mr. Curry, that I believe the Rappahannock needs picking it up, and there should be additional information on that in this week's edition as well.
That is true, and Mr. Christopher is in the room with me, videoing for his livestream today as part of the press, and he gave me a thumbs up that he will be engaged tomorrow morning for that event.
Very good. All right, if no one has anything else to add, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And thank you, Ms. Donahue, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Standby. Okay.
Aye.
And Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Here.
See y'all later.
Aye.